Good morning, this is New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for July 22, 2014. We'll begin with the Special Order Calendar. Decision Items, item number one, 39180 B.C., 2525 Kings Highway, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Jordan Most, behalf of the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, 77585 B.C., 1333 Brookville Boulevard, Queens.
Jordan Most from Sheldon LaBelle on behalf of the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Nixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three, 2496 B.C., 213 Madison Street, Manhattan, the office of Rothkirk Inspector.
Good morning, Eric Palatnik on behalf of Rothkirk, Rothkirk Inspector.
Okay, Commissioners, we received a submission yesterday afternoon, and I believe we've all had the opportunity to review it, so I believe we can move this item. Motion to grant.
Chair, Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number four, 24503 B.C., 1611 Willetts Point Boulevard, Queens, Jeffrey Chester.
Good morning, Jeffrey Chester for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five, 24803 B.C., 1915 Third Avenue, Manhattan, Stratton Sanders.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jeremiah Cantrovog for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number six, I'm sorry.
Vice Chair Collins, congratulations on the capella and good luck.
Thank you.
Item number six, 27107 B.C., 215 West 23rd Street, Manhattan, Eric Palatnik.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number seven, 99784 B.C., 79798804 Union Street, Brooklyn, the office of Sheldon LaBelle.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Irving Mencken for Sheldon LaBelle, P.C. The last hearing, the Board of Standards and Appeals, the Commissioners here raised certain issues and wish to have the Community Board itself, their recommendations submitted, and they were aware, you were aware of the fact that the Community Board was holding the continued hearing on June 26th. Because of the July 4th re-holiday and the proximity of the hearing of the Community Board and the date, the submission date that was requested of me, that I made some minor mistakes on the submission letter, but other than that, I wish to recite what the substance of what the submission was. The hearing at the Community Board was of the Land Use Committee, not the full board, although it appears that the full board would likely adopt and include their written recommendations, the recommendations given by the committee. Nonetheless, what we did is we amended, we had the plans amended and the application amended to reflect a reasonable little ground with the recommendations of the Land Use Committee of Community Board Six. The committee recommended several, three things. They requested that the roof amenities be pulled back five feet from the building edges to afford privacy for the adjoining buildings. The amended plans that were submitted with my submission on July 7th, on the roof plan show that there are planters all around the perimeter roof adjacent to the adjacent buildings that complies with that in its entirety. The second recommendation-
I'm sorry, it complies with what?
With the Land Use Committee's request and suggestion as a quick pro-call for their recommendation to the full board to approve this application, that a privacy barrier of five feet in depth be put on the roof plan to prevent the recreation area that that part of the roof of having people looking over on the adjoining buildings. The amended plans reflect, comply with that. The second recommendation that the Community Board said they were going to include in their recommendation to the full board to write to this, to BSA, was that although the back wall is going to be set back five feet to afford compliance with the multiple dwelling law, that they wanted all the balconies removed. There is where a client feels that they were overreaching, but he let them halfway, sort of, that instead of doors on the second floor going out to the balcony at the base of the setback rear wall, there will only be windows. And while it would appear possibly that there's going to be pedestrian use or occupant use at the rear, there has to be a balcony, there has to be a railing for safety purposes under the building code. But the doors that were initially proposed in the application have been eliminated and windows have been substituted for them. And the third floor balcony was eliminated in its entirety. However, the client feels that the upper balconies are something which is rather remote from the rear yards, just as the zoning itself considers balconies at the fourth floor and higher as to not be an obstruction in open space. So he wishes to and requests this board to approve this application within keeping the upper balconies at the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors. Now, they made another recommendation that the apartments, that they have low-income components for some of the apartments. Our client feels that that is something beyond the scope of the zoning, beyond the scope of this application, and has no desire to comply with that requirement, and we're making that statement on the record. Now, because of the, as I said earlier, the time factor of awaiting the Community Board hearing, amending the plans, and addressing all of the issues regarding the dialogue between this office and the Community Board, I was able to barely get this amended on time on July 7th. I apologize for two errors that were in there, that I indicated that we only have 24 apartments. It was never changed from the original 28. And the, and there was, again, an erroneous statement on that letter talking about the fact that the hypothetical elevator access to parking in the cellar was going to be destructive of all the apartments above it. But that's not correct, they only need a machine room above it, maybe the second floor alone, maybe the third floor would lose an apartment as well. But that's not the issue. The important thing is that the studies that were appended to the July 7th admission were in response to this board's request that we study the feasibility of retaining 14 parking spaces or the like, that the zoning would require if there were no waiver for the 28 apartments. But if this building were demolished and rebuilt with 28 apartments, the zoning would not require it. And what this retention of parking in the cellar does, whether accessed by ramp or accessed by elevator, is effectively, it destroys a significant commercial component for the retail store above. It destroys the, a functional use of the cellar for storage for the apartments above. And it also, it creates havoc with the feasibility of the proposed commercial uses, whether we have a ramp that takes up part of the space, or elevators taking up part of the frontage. It is, it is not consistent with the design for this building. And equally important, it is incompatible with what the application submitted in January indicates to be commercial uses in Use of Six on both sides of the street, on both sides of this building. So respectfully request that this parking for, that would not be public, that would arguably only be for the residential occupants of the building, but as waived by zoning, not be a further consideration by this board. Now, at the executive session yesterday, there were comments made by this board that I feel should be properly addressed by Mr. Zambrano, the architect, rather than me trying to stand in the shoes on those issues. I would like to ask Mr. Zambrano to step up and address the issues that were raised in your comments. And also, the owner himself is here, and I would like him to be available and to testify in some of the issues that might be raised by this board. If you have any questions-
We'll be happy to take further testimony, but first, Commissioners, do you have questions of Mr. Mencken?
Well, considering the parking issue, I guess was really my issue, and the placement of exactly where you put your elevator, I am not sure that I'm totally on board with exactly what you're saying. I think that the design that you proposed sort of maximizes, in a sense, the inability to be able to have enough storage and additional space for retail storage, et cetera. I think that if you look at the plan, that elevator, if it's pushed to the wall actually, would allow you then to have sort of front access to the elevator, go right down to the cellar, and then, you know, go out the back of the elevator without having to have so much sort of maneuverability room. So when the architect speaks to that, I'd like him to explain exactly why he made the choice of putting the elevator where it is, and, because I think it just takes up more space than is necessary. So I wasn't really convinced necessarily about your argument at this point.
You're talking about, obviously, the elevator for the vehicle access to the cellar.
Yeah, so where he's got it now, it takes up a lot of area. You've got to have maneuverability around the elevator, but if the elevator's actually pushed to the wall, to the building wall, you then have the ability to have additional storage space in the cellar that you didn't have before. You could probably recoup some of that. So if you could speak to that, that would-
All right, I will ask him to speak for that, of course, but you realize that that elevator way you showed it is where it is now. So the initial study was not intended to come up with a new elevator location or design a new elevator location, it was to utilize the existing elevator shaft and not having to reconstruct the elevator elsewhere, but I'll let Mrs. Zambrano address that question in more detail.
Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Mencken? No, okay. We'd like to have the architect come up, that's fine.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Christian Zambrano. So the parking elevator in question, you wanted to move it where, towards the left side?
Towards the right side of the building, I guess, right? So it's on the building wall side, as opposed to in the middle. But you're saying that the original elevator shaft is there?
Correct. Currently, there are two elevator shafts. We only utilize one of them. And currently, the way the cars come in is they come in from the street into the building, they maneuver around, and enter from the backside of the elevator. If we were to come from the street into the elevator, it would cause backup, because as one elevator, as one car comes up and another one wants to come in, there would be some sort of delay parking.
You'd have to provide space in front of the elevator for somebody to come out while, and then get out while someone wants to come in, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Somehow, we would have to arrange it so that the elevator now is no longer directly accessible to the street. We sort of have a buffer in, right after the street curb line, so that they would come in, and if there would be anyone there, would just maneuver around them. But now you're pushing the elevator more and more into the building, whereas the structure itself was meant for that elevator to be there.
And had you considered changing the cab so that it was sort of, you know, enter one way and out the other way, or to eliminate somebody having to kind of make that turn into the elevator?
Right. Again, if it was only one way, then on the backside, you would still need that maneuverability to go around. And now you would need two openings on the street wall, one to get out and one to come in.
So even if you moved the elevator over, you'd still have that issue of being, of having to have sort of an area in front of the elevator, as well as area behind the elevator to accommodate the cars sort of coming in and going out?
Correct. And while moving that elevator, we would have to see the structural implications, what that causes.
Okay.
Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Zambrano? Are there members of the public who would like to speak? Please come forward, you'll each be given three minutes. We can just come up one at a time, it's fine. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, my name is Linda Darrow. I am part-owner of 799-801 President Street. It's a six-family co-op in back of the Union Street garage. I think it is, first of all, important to remember that the back wall of this garage comes right up to the property lines of the buildings on President Street. Not only is Mr. Meltzer planning 15 balconies on the back of the building, he is also planning a terrace walkway on the lower level that would be accessible to the three apartments. In addition, he is planning for a communal rooftop garden. The balconies will disrupt the tranquility, safety, and peace that we have all enjoyed, which makes Park Slope a very, very special place. I see them as a hazard that could have dangerous consequences to those residents of President Street who have children playing in their back gardens. Balconies are meant to be used, and I am sure they will be. But what happens when the first bottle falls or is thrown off of a balcony? The only place it can land is in someone's garden on President Street. The terrace walkway that is planned for the lower level is also very troubling. I see this as a huge security risk. Anyone can literally hop off that terrace into one of the gardens on President Street. The communal rooftop garden is another source of concern. Somehow, Mr. Meltzer thinks that setting it back from the edge of the roof is going to lessen the impact of loud noise coming from large groups and raucous parties. I understand that there will be boom and netting extending 10 feet into the gardens to catch any debris. I would also strongly recommend that the entire back of the garage be draped as an additional precaution. In conclusion, I'm urging the Bureau of Standards and Appeals not only not to approve the plans as submitted, I know that balconies, terraces, and a communal rooftop will increase the value of Mr. Meltzer's property, but it will decrease the value of our properties on President Street. And I believe that these concerns and subsequent changes and recommendations are in keeping with the recommendations of Community Board Six. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Lorraine Schramm, I'm the owner of 807 President Street. I'll just speak off the cuff, because I'm not an elegant speaker, but I feel the same as Linda does, that I think all our privacy from his building into our backyards is just going to have no privacy. These buildings, the balconies will overlook our property, whether they're on the first, second, third, or fourth floor, and it's really a privacy and a security story. That's all I could say. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Dave Nimmens, the owner of 803 President, which backs up onto the property in question. I've owned it for 28 years, and I'm part of a group of people who represent 200 years of ownership and residence on the block, all of whom stand opposed to this as proposed, for really three reasons. We've talked about the 15 external balconies and terraces and the roof deck. We believe this design compromises quality of life, safety, and resale value of all of our buildings in perpetuity, and they impose undue short and long-term costs on every surrounding resident and owner. Short-term, the balconies means the demolition of the six-story rear wall subjecting our houses to year of noise and debris and dust, risk of potential accident, risk of toxics in their yards and rodents. Seven years, seven yards, and more than 60 current residents will endure that. That's the first cost we're already being asked to pay. We're then being asked to pay a longer-term cost, which is the privacy and security of all the enclosed rear yards on this half of the block. It means increased noise, increased hazards of items, substances, flammable, trash, follamer being thrown into the backyards, as has been addressed. It means we will spend our lives looking out into the balconies and negotiating noise, trash, and safety with 100 renters, including children, families, teenagers, and friends. It will vastly increase the outdoor noise in the mid-block rear areas. The third, long-term and permanent cost is that we're being asked to bear the reduced resale value of our properties. Balconies are not required, they're an amenity. The developers already have said they're not interested in doing affordable units, contrary to what CB6 suggested. They've estimated the range between $4 and $11,000 rental per unit in this building. These are not affordable units. These are high-market rate units, and the balconies are an amenity. That amenity basically increases their profit at the risk of the equity savings and security of everybody living there now. That doesn't seem like a fair deal, it doesn't seem like a compromised deal. Finally, CB6 has already recommended against the proposed project. You have a different set of imperatives. You recognize that stacked balconies do not, in fact, improve light and air. If you, by keeping balconies on top, it doesn't help the people who are below that in the proposed building, it certainly doesn't help us. It's not, we don't think that they have a reasonable right to develop their property, but we're saying that the balconies and terraces really present an undue burden, both short and long-term, on everybody else, and essentially transfers wealth from us to them. We're already being asked to shoulder a pretty disproportionate amount of the burden. CB6 has already spoken and suggested a number of compromises, most of which they're not really interested in doing. So we're just asking you that in the spirit of compromise, you are our voice, you are our community voice. We're asking you to think about the quality of our life, and think about specifically the rear wall and what that will entail, and approve it without those balconies. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Susan Heron, 813 President Street, owner since 1977. I'd like to read a short letter, it has been presented to the Bureau, I'd like to read it to the audience. Dear Mr. Collins, in reference to calendar 99784 BZ, we appreciate the concerns of Community Board Six and urge you to adopt their recommendations. As longstanding members of this community, we have seen many changes and have worked to build it through hard work and voting for those who want the best for us all. The pros and cons of each side have been well documented, most importantly, the terraces and balconies that would affect each of us, and in particular, will impact those whose properties are directly adjacent to the garage at 800 Union Street. Mr. Lou Meltzer mentioned at our last meeting with CB6, as well in the past by telephone, that he did not understand our position on the easement rights and that we had nothing to lose. However, as a certified shorthand reporter and former court reporter in Brooklyn Supreme Court, as well as a former licensed real estate salesperson, I am aware of the implications therein. Mr. Meltzer expressed his desire to provide the best for his family in the future, and I say we feel the same about our families. The Park Slope neighborhood is different than it was many years ago, and ultimately may still be different in the years ahead, with possible changes in laws and customs and the verticality of the city with little room to expand in any other direction but up. We are confident and hopeful that the Board of Standards and Appeals will agree with the keen understanding of Community Board Six on the implications of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I am Charles Matthews, 813 President Street. My wife Susan Heron and I have lived there for nearly 40 years. The Park Slope that we're here speaking of is not the Park Slope we bought. We worked very hard, we did extracurricular civic duties, and we voted for a way of life that we believe in. We're not opposed to anyone coming in. Those before me have spoken on the things that we just don't want. These things do not help us at all. We have given a lot. We believe in a city like New York. We are a vertical city, we can't spread out. The zonings perhaps will change in the future. We want to keep our air rights, we want to keep our easement rights, so that our house would be the way we want it to be. Now, Mr. Meltzer and his people are thinking different. We only ask the board to do one thing, do what is right. Our way of life shouldn't totally be changed. We would like to be able to walk into our garden and not worry about somebody falling off a terrace on the second floor, or the other components that they wish to add. Look at the whole situation, and please do the recommendations that the Community Board has suggested. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Mr. Mencken?
I'd like to ask Mr. Meltzer to come up and speak in regard to the-
Fine, I just asked if there are other speakers, nobody indicated they want to speak, but if you'd like to speak, please come up.
I respect your request that he be authorized to do it, but before I call him up-
It's a public hearing, anyone can speak, so have him come up.
I just have to, I'd like to point out that the, I understand the concern of the residents on President Street. I just wish to point out that there are, the remaining balconies, after Mr. Meltzer directed that some be removed and some be made inaccessible, we now are going to have, since we start off with 28 apartments, 14 facing the rear, and for two floors, they're inaccessible, so we're talking about 14 minus six apartments. So we're talking about eight apartments that have access to-
Excuse me for a minute, Mr. Mencken, excuse me for a moment. People, please make sure that your cellphones are turned off or on silent. Thank you, go ahead.
So we have 14 apartments facing the rear, and of those 14 apartments, with the elimination of balconies, or functional use of the rear open space on the second floor and the third floor, to remove six of them, we're left with eight apartments that seem to be an overriding concern of the residents on President Street. And with just pointing out that detail, now I'd like to ask Mr. Meltzer to address the concerns as he views it, and-
Thank you, good morning. Just, so, you know, I've owned this building for 34 years, so I just didn't buy it to do this project. And I hope you're aware, I have the pictures here of what the street looks like, it's commercial-
I think many does have been to the site.
Up and down. So we were at the Community Board, there was a hearing, I believe, I believe that I'm right, Mr. Nimmens said that Community Board Six did not approve it, I believe they did approve it, the committee approved it, subject to three conditions. So let me talk, so the point I want to make is, we met with people in the community, we were at the committee's hearing, I spoke there extensively, listened, and then we changed our proposal. The biggest problem that the community, the people behind on President Street had was the balconies. So we removed the balconies on the second floor. You know, what's happening is-
I thought it was all the balconies below the fourth floor.
That's the same thing, I was going to get, I was going to, but, yes, that's correct. The first floor, the rear wall stays in place, and then on floors two through six, we have to bring it back five feet. So that meant that, you know, it would look something like this at the second floor. And that whole horizontal area of five feet on the second floor is going to be turned into balconies for those apartments, so we've removed them. They won't be there. The balconies that would have been on the third floor, we removed. Starting from the fourth floor, there would be balconies. Now, I want to address what I really believe are the valid concerns of the neighbors behind, number one, that a safety issue, that people may, I don't think intentionally they're going to throw bottles off these balconies, but something may fall off the balcony. So we could put screens on those balconies to prevent that from happening. As far as the privacy issue- As far as the privacy issues of people on these balconies, I don't think people on the balconies are going to be standing and peering down at what goes on in the backyards, and that's why we did remove them from the second and the third floor, where they would undoubtedly create some noise, which might impede the private use of those balconies, or at least diminish them in some way. So, that's what we did to try and meet the community's objections. The other thing we did was coming back to the rear wall, and I'm not suggesting we do this now, but the rear wall is being brought back five feet to comply with some provision of the multiple dwelling law. If the rear wall wasn't coming back five feet, then there would be no possibility of balconies. So we asked the people in the community if it was okay, we'd need their consent with a light and air easement, to leave the rear wall exactly where it is. That eliminates the balconies. We even sent them a form that the city has for that purpose, and we got no response. So, we have tried, I'm just telling you from the bottom of my heart, we've tried.
Okay.
As far as the other, if I can just take one more minute, the thing with the 14 parking spaces, look, the community is losing 200 and some odd parking spaces. These 14 for half the apartments in the building, aside from hurting and damaging the look of the building and the useful, the utility of the basement space and part of the first floor, I think it'll make the situation on Union Street worse, because if there's an elevator that people pull in from Union Street, undoubtedly at times, it will back up. The elevator would have to be right at the front of the building, I've seen garages like that, and if somebody's going in and going down, that means that there are cars that are going, if somebody else is trying to get in at about the same time, it's going to be parked either on the sidewalk or on the street waiting to get in. So, in my opinion, it's not feasible. So, we can take care of the balconies by either screenings so nothing can fall off. Community Board Six Committee did approve it, subject to the conditions on the parking, which I think are not feasible, and the low and affordable housing.
Affordable units, yes.
I don't think that's really, I hope it's not part of this. We're going to make a beautiful building on Union Street, and if you look at the pictures, it'll be a big improvement for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minkin. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Minkin? Any comments on the application? Okay. I think you should have the opportunity to respond in writing to summarize what Mr. Meltzer just said, and also to respond to the privacy concerns raised by the neighbors. Can you submit that to the Board within a week?
Yes.
So that's the 29th. The opposition, the neighbors, can have an additional week, so that's April, August, excuse me, I knew it began with an A. August, what's the date?
Fifth.
The fifth.
Sorry.
Fifth. And we will continue the hearing on August 19th.
Thank you, the Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you.
New case, item number eight, calendar number 16993VZ, 246 through 248 West 80th Street, Manhattan, the office of Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Frederick A. Becker. This is an application to extend the time of a previously granted special permit to allow the operation of a physical culture establishment at the subject premises. This is the second 10-year extension and the fourth time that this application has returned to the Board based on various modifications and enlargements. During that 20-year period, there have been no issues with the neighbors, no complaints, certainly in the last 10 years with the managing company, with the owner of the building, with New York Sports Club, or with Community Board Number Seven. Prior to the public hearing, as was required, we posted on all of the corners in the neighborhood, there were approximately 20 corners we posted at, so the community and the residents and the occupants, actually occupants, not residents of the building, had full notice. With that in mind, we attended your executive session, and I have the response to some of the comments. One is, we will remove that note if required by the Board, apologies, it was just taken from the last go-around, and we'll remove the message slash massage room in the cellar, the, is no longer massage or messages being transmitted at that location. With regard to the CFO, the main, we are in the, there are two buildings on the same lot. There's a five-story building which we occupy entirely, there is a five-story building adjacent on Broadway, we occupy the second floor. There is no CFO, actually, the last CFO for the building on Broadway, which is a commercial building, was from 1940 some, 1968 for a school, not there anymore. There is no CFO in that building. We did get a temporary CFO for, under the previous application, our applicant unfortunately passed away, we will get a new CFO for our space if this application is granted. In light of the fact that we're dealing with another building which has violations which are not related to us, we would request two years to get the CFO, please. And with regard to the sign attenuation, there was no sign attenuation required originally in the original plans or in the subsequent renewals and/or amendments. We do occupy one building entirely, we're at the second floor of a commercial building, above commercial use, below commercial uses, and again, there's been no comments, no issues, no problems, et cetera. Thank you.
Commissioner Hinkson, do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, I did. So, you're saying that your space is not above any residential?
There's no legal residential in the building.
So, it's just commercial above you, totally?
That's what, yes, it's commercial space.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions or your...
That's the best of my knowledge, but there is no CFO and no, no one has ever shown to be a resident in the building.
Okay, because it doesn't actually look like that when you're there, but...
No, it's not a residential building, it was a school as, up to 1968, then became offices, or in studios or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so you have some minor amendments to do to the plans, can you get that into us in a week?
Get it in tomorrow, yes. Thank you.
Submission date of the 29th. Commissioners, you have any problem with closing the hearing on this matter today?
No.
So we'll close the hearing and we'll set the decision for August 19th. Motion to close.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Alton Lee Brown.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, decision items, item number nine, 10314A, 55 Everett Street, Brooklyn, the firm of Ackerman Center Fit.
Morning, morning Commissioners, Steve Gaglau here for Ackerman Center Fit.
Motion to grant.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Alton Lee Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
New cases, item number 10, 49-14A, 5655 Independence Avenue, Bronx, the firm of Rothschild.
Good morning Commissioners, Chair Collins. Ethan Goodman with Fox Rothschild, representing the New York Archdiocese. We are here before you seeking a permission pursuant to GCL 35, to build in the bed of a map street that is entirely owned by the New York Archdiocese. As you see in the site plan, behind me, the Archdiocese seeks to enlarge the current home for retired priests, to add another wing, the Egan Pavilion, to house an additional approximately 46 retired priests. We have also submitted an application to the Department of City Planning and received a vote to approve, authorizations pursuant to the Special Natural Area District, they voted to approve on June 11th. This is a steep slope site in Riverdale. We wanted to connect the enlargement to the existing O'Connell residence, to use the common areas and services in that residence and not be duplicative. Therefore, we had a choice to build out to the east or to build to the west. The site drops off substantially to the west, there's a huge grade change, that really wasn't feasible. So we were building out to the east, and Independence Avenue is a 60-foot street that's been on the city map for over 65 years, it is entirely owned by the Archdiocese, and unbuilt to the south and north of us. We would cross that street and continue to build this enlargement on the east side of it. We would also seek relief pursuant to 7201G for two provisions of zoning to allow us to not provide the required front yards or heightened setback, because we are, of course, building across this map street. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions? Any comments? Thank you, Mr. Goodman, I think your presentation was succinct. Commissioners, do you have any problems with closing the hearing on this?
No.
Any speakers from the audience? Any members of the public want to speak? Hearing...
Oh, sorry.
No doubt.
I just wanted to reiterate, since we are before the DOB for permitting, and we've removed almost all the objections but for the GCL, we would be very enthusiastic about the Board being able to vote on this as soon as possible. Thanks.
I understand. So I think if everyone is okay, Commissioners, we can vote to close this and set a decision date for July 29th. Motion to close.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Alton Lee Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar. Decision items, item number 11, 21013BZ, 43-1250th Street, Queens, the office of Sheldon LaBelle.
Jordan Most from Sheldon LaBelle, PC, the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Alton Lee Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 12, 3914BZ, 97 Reed Street, Manhattan, Francis Angelino.
Good morning Commissioners. Frank Angelino on behalf of Exceed Fitness.
Motion to grant.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Alton Lee Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number 13, 7811BZ, on 33 through 3712A, 78-70 Winchester Boulevard, Queens, the office of Sheldon LaBelle.
Jordan Most from Sheldon LaBelle, the applicant.
Okay, so you asked for an adjournment?
Yeah, regrettably, I think, there are many cooks in this kitchen, and none, not present here, of course, but in trying to work through the plans, we're probably going to actually request, I think today was my submission date, I think we're going to wind up needing to further adjourn it, but yes, we are seeking an adjournment.
Okay, do you want to give me some idea of what kind of timetable might be realistic? This case has been here since...
It's been here quite a while.
September of last year.
Yeah, I think we would, well, I'd rather put it, I'd rather put it in writing, but I think we're going to need at least four to six weeks.
So...
Trying to be as realistic as possible.
Yeah, why don't you just give me that calendar, because I forgot, thank you. Why don't you submit on September 9th? We'll have the continued hearing on September... Okay.
Yeah, there had been...
And we'll give the opposition until the 16th to respond, and we'll bring you back for the continued hearing on September 23rd.
Thank you.
Does that work?
I think so, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 2714BZ, 496 Broadway, Manhattan, the office of Sheldon LaBelle.
Sheldon LaBelle of Sheldon LaBelle, PC, the applicant, good morning.
Good morning. If you heard from review session yesterday, I believe the Commissioners were satisfied with your most recent submission.
We did.
Okay. Then I think we can close the hearing on this matter and set a date for decision. Are there any speakers on this? None. So, motion to close.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Alton Lee Brown.
Aye.
And we'll set a decision date of August 19th.
Thank you, Vice Chair, thank you Commissioners.
New cases, item number 15, 15311BZ, 271130th Avenue, Queens, the office of Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and we heard the Board's comments. The signage calculations, we will fix up for the Board and make it so it's a C13 district, and we apologize for that. And we'll also correct the statement, we had misinformation in there, the building was built in 1958, when the previous approval was issued, not in 77. But I know the Board had concerns or questions regarding the history of usage of the property, and is wondering what you may feel comfortable with to provide to you. We gave you on our last submission, I believe, one of the, a lot of business records, but the most telling was a business record from the bank, Atlantic Bank, indicating that they've had an account, this business, that this address has had an account there for the last 30 somewhat years. But if there's anything else the Board would like, we'd be happy to provide it to you.
Commissioners, I know several of you raised this issue of proof of, there was not a discontinuance.
Well, I had taken issue with one of your submissions of proof, and the New York City Department of Finance noticed a property value that it didn't indicate that there was a continuing business there, because the way in which the Department of Finance works regarding assessment, if a building is shuttered, it's assessed as if it's open, and the notice of property value would not reflect anything different, whether it was open or shuttered. It would still say that the income was based on comparable properties, which is what it says, so that I had asked if you can have other types of submissions, as in utility bills or COE's listings for the affected years.
Yeah, we were trying to, as you can tell, the operation is not a, not a high-dollar operation, we were trying to avoid incurring more costs, I was hoping the bank record from the bank was sufficient for you. I don't know if you had a chance to see that letter.
I, the only other thing I recall seeing was the Department of Motor Vehicle official business certificate for 2007 and 2011, but that doesn't take you all the way back to the expiration of the latest grant.
No, it doesn't. No, I know it doesn't. We're trying to provide you with what business records the owner had. Did you happen to see the letter from the bank, though, by chance?
I actually, I did not see the letter of the, from the bank, but you could start by saying, like, when did that last grant expire?
In the 84.
Yeah, well, you would need to show continuous use from 1984, and what I've seen only covers 2007 and on.
Yeah, because that's all those were available, but I hear what you want, you want more from 1984 forward, so we'll be happy to provide that to you, I'll go back to the client and we'll try and dig up whatever information we can. They have been there.
Mr. Blonik, by any chance, is this the same owner who owned it in 84, do you know?
I don't know for sure. I believe it's the same operator, I don't know if it's the same owner.
Okay, if it's the same operator, he's got to have some sort of business records, perhaps you can get an affidavit from him that discusses the continuous nature of the business, I think that would be helpful.
We'll find more information.
And check whether you actually gave us those bank records, because I don't recall seeing that either.
It was just a letter from the bank, from Atlantic Bank, it was on our last submission, I'll, we'll resubmit it to you, so it's more upfront, it was not right up front.
But more things from 84 on.
Understood.
Commissioner Montanez, I think you had some...
Well, assuming that you can provide the evidence of continuous use, I question whether you can comply with the Community Board's recommendations regarding improvement to the appearance of the site.
Yes.
As far as possibly a new fence, some landscaping, and painting the facade.
The painting is easy, landscaping is, obviously it's an auto repair shop, so the landscaping is a little difficult, but we could certainly paint the site, we could clean up the fence and put some slats in the fence, so the fence is more presentable.
I don't think that they really, I think they're trying to make it blend in with the site next door, which from the photos looks very nice.
I'll talk to the owner, maybe in our next submission, we could show you some evidence that they've tried to clean up the site, and maybe some painting. up the site, and maybe some painting and fixing it up.
And some landscaping.
Be happy to.
Any other questions or concerns, Commissioners?
Just to clarify, you are removing that shed area in the back?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Right, thank you. Some pictures showing its removal would be helpful, because it is still there.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Anyone? Okay. All right, Mr. Palatnik, you can...
If I may ask, if we could submit in September, just because it's going to take us some time. The owner is Greek, and getting the records of him in August is difficult.
Fine. Submit by September 9. And we'll have the hearing on September 23.
Thank you.
Item number 16, calendar number 28612-BZ, 1925, Union Street, Brooklyn. Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik, on behalf of People of Destiny, which the pastor of the church is here today with us, as is a parishioner within the church. And we're very pleased that your board has reviewed the application, and that, for the most part, it seems like you are somewhat happy with the substance of the application, and you had some questions relating to the rear wall, the northern wall, which is adjacent to the buildings that front along Eastern Parkway. I believe that was the discussion we heard yesterday.
There were a couple of specific questions. So, did you want to make a brief presentation?
No, I'd be happy to answer whatever, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, Commissioner Montanez, I know you had some specifics.
Right, I'm not sure what the adjacent conditions are to the north and also to the east, because it's not really presented well on your plans. So, I'd like to know, you know, the depth of the rear yards. Oh, you're also proposing this outdoor terrace...
Yes.
On the...
Should be on the eastern side of the...
Third floor. I would also, if you could, you're not counting the first, if you could just be consistent in how you name your floors.
Yes, I realize it's confusing between the mezzanine levels, and then we refer to as four stories. Yes, I understand what you're...
Whatever, the cellar, basement, first, second, third.
And that's both on the plans and in the statement.
Yes.
Kind of hard to...
It's hard to follow the other.
So, and there was also, my comment yesterday was that there's a significant amount of storage space in this facility. There's also a significant amount of open space in this facility. And I really felt that some of that could be condensed and some setback provided along the rear property line. You haven't really presented us with a lesser variance at this point, because the lesser variance right now is actually the as-of-right, correct?
Yeah, we did, during...
What you call the lesser variance is the as-of-right.
Well, we did another lesser variance during the notice of comments phase. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but it was maintaining the first two floors at their existing noncompliance, and then providing compliant at the second and third floors, setting it back.
But that's the as-of-right, I believe.
Well, the as-of-right, the true as-of-right, the building was post-61, so the true as-of-right is really the removal of the building, removal of a portion of the building.
Okay.
So, the lesser is for the portion of it. But...
Investigate another lesser variance.
We can show you the board. We've looked at it overnight, and the architect is here with us today, and he can come up and speak. We did look at it last night, because we heard your concern is a substantive concern that we were concerned about, obviously, as well as you were. The issue that we have with setting it back is twofold. First, let's talk about the buildings that we're potentially impacting, which, I don't know if you have the as-of-right plan set there, but it has a survey on the front page. It shows the dimensions to the buildings behind. That's in the as-of-right plan package. But what it shows you is that there's two buildings, really, that conceivably the most impacted. One is the one that fronts right on Portals, that the corner of it touches Portal Street. Here, I could pass this up to you.
Which one is this?
And that gives you the dimensions. And you could see the two buildings that are really the most impacted are the four-story residential to the north, which is on the left side of the page, and the four-story residential to the north, which is on the right side of the building. Each have a dimension separating from our property of about 10 feet approximately between the two.
That's significant.
I, we feel...
That's a significant impact. Yes.
You feel, I thought it was you saying it's a significant amount of space, but you feel...
No, no, it's a significant impact on those buildings.
By the provision of the 10 feet, you're saying it's not enough? You don't feel the 10 feet is enough space?
Well, besides the fact of the, the building will just rise vertically for four stories, that you're having this outdoor terrace where there's, you know, a significant number of people can congregate, and it's right adjacent to rear windows of multiple dwellings.
The purpose, the purpose of the terrace, though, is really not to be used on much of a daily basis. It's really for, only on a Sunday, if there were to be a wedding or something like that, would be for the most part of it. And it's geared and oriented to face towards the park. It's not geared and oriented towards the neighbors. We could put up some type of soundproofing wall there, or some type of attenuation measure along that side.
I know that I heard, read that in your statement, but I'm looking at this, and it seems to me that it's not oriented towards the park at all, that the outdoor...
Oh, no, that plan, what you're looking at on that plan, excuse me, is, on that plan you're looking at is the as-of-right. That's the as-of-right set. I was just simply providing that to you to show you the dimensions of the spaces. Where the proposal is, the proposed roof terrace is facing on Portal Street.
What's the number of the plan drawing for that, please?
It's drawing...
Another thing is, when you put your plans together, could you please...
A104.
Could you please indicate north?
Yes, I'll tell the architect.
To orient yourself in looking at them.
We'll have the architect put that...
It's very, very confusing.
So, A104?
A104 is the proposed plan set. And what that's showing you there is, the proposed outdoor space has been set up in a way, I was presenting that earlier plan, because that had the dimensions, that was for the earlier conversation, the distance between the buildings. But as you can see, it's oriented away from the adjoining properties, and there is a separation with the stair bulkhead coming up. And the church is here today. They're really not proposing to be tremendous amount of activity up there. They did want to have a nice place, though, when there is a religious, obviously, a wedding, to have a place for people to go upstairs.
Well, that's more palatable. However, I'm still concerned...
Right, and facing the back, about the distance.
Hold on a minute. Sir, turn off your phone. It's the second time I've asked today. Go ahead.
I'm still concerned regarding the residences to the rear on the north side. And it was very confusing to follow everything, you know, in terms of the north, no orientation arrows and...
Keith is the architect, and he'll correct that. He's hearing you.
And the misnaming of the floors, et cetera.
Sure. And I'd like, if it's okay with you, for Keith to speak for just a moment about the impacts of moving the wall, which we'll delineate in our submission. And we will show you a revision with moving the wall. But there's a reason why we're not so quick to move it, and that's simply two things. First, there's an impact on the program, where we'll lose space as a result of the movement of the wall. But the second thing also is the cost associated with it, is it adds a value of about $100,000 to $150,000 in construction costs additional to what they're proposing. And the church is working on very limited funding, and it's, but...
I was thinking about keeping the existing building where it is and having, providing a setback...
Setback at that period. Do you want to speak for a second?
Hello, my name's Keith Striga, registered architect, State of New York. Let me just grab these drawings for a second. Under advisement, I spoke with Mr. Palatnik last night. One of the things that's of concern, and we will take it into consideration, is the main function of the building is the sanctuary. It's really what's impacting, and everything is supplement to the sanctuary. The sanctuary is the jewel, the gem of where they worship. One of the things we've looked at, and since last night, we obviously haven't had time to revise the drawings, if we were to pull it back, keeping the first two floors as is existing, quote-unquote, existing, nonconforming, lack of better words, and pulling in, it's actually going to decrease the number of occupants within the sanctuary, because it pretty much eliminates our balconies above in that part.
I don't see why you can't add balconies in, you have these very large, open spaces.
Yeah, we will definitely take that into consideration, like I said. We had the comment came across to us late yesterday, and we would like to just take that under advisement. And what type of setback are you thinking or proposing, or would you recommend from that rear yard?
Well, I think when you give us more information and perhaps some streetscapes...
Yep.
Regarding what the conditions are to the rear, you know, something that you would consider reasonable.
Okay, that's fine.
And then, you know, we will comment on that.
Yeah, do a section through that portion.
I would be very happy to do that, sure. And then you can see the light coming into it. There's also an elevation change also from one side of the site to the other. That's why...
Yeah, and we don't understand that, so if you can show that in your section.
And I'll also conform with DOB standards in regards to naming conventions of floors, because it's very, the site's half in, half in, half out, but we will make that as very clear and clarify that for the board's satisfaction.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments?
Yes. I looked at your traffic report, traffic and parking report, which I guess we just got yesterday afternoon. And I had a question regarding how you got your trip generation rates and modal splits. You took the Hudson Yards data.
Okay, of course, Mr. Rothkirk prepared that, and he couldn't be here today, but if you relay a question, I'll ask him.
But in his, in his statement, it says, you know, that there would be 4% traveling by car, et cetera, bus, da-da-da-da. 70% would come by foot. But it's based on 80% of the congregation living within one mile. So, I really question that. Do you have...
We could provide you with evidence, yes. The congregation all does live within the area, so we could provide you with...
Specifically, within a mile.
Yes, yes.
Because otherwise, I'm not sure how this data is really applicable.
We'll clarify that for you, and we'll give you some data to support that, that they all live within one mile.
As of right now, though, you're not providing any parking.
No, there's no parking provided, nor is any required. And it was a big topic of conversation at the community board level. We spoke about it, went through two hearings. They actually denied us at the first hearing, and it was reopened again. We came back to discuss the parking. So, they were concerned about it. They were happy with the solutions that we gave. They were mostly concerned with the potential for the blockage of cars or driveways on a Sunday morning when church is in session. And they, through the outreach of the pastor and our congregation and a lot of communication, everybody's in agreement that they'll be good neighbors and that they'll be able to communicate with them and not block any of their cars in. So, that was the big discussion at the community board level.
Okay, and you also know how many people, how they arrive at the current church?
Yes. You're really, you know, I don't want to, the church is not one of tremendous financial means, and a lot of the people are hard-working, day-to-day folks. Many people don't even own cars. So, a lot of people do come mass transit, a lot of people do walk. This is not the, the congregation was a high-car ownership within the congregation itself. So, that's why we're confident we won't have an impact.
And just getting back to the balcony, you know, it's really surrounded on three sides, and it has a roof, so I was just questioning why that wasn't counted as floor area.
The balcony is actually open to the, which the roof terrace you're talking about?
Not the roof terrace. I thought it was on the third or fourth floor. It wasn't on the roof. You can just look at that.
I'll take a look at it, sure.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Are there members of the public who would like to speak? Any speakers on this item? Okay. Seeing none, how much time do you think you would need to make the revisions and respond to the issues that are raised today?
If we could follow the same calendars, last, the last case was submitted on September 9. That would give the architect time to revise the plans.
Okay, so submission on the 9th, and we'll continue the hearing on September 23.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 17, calendar number 29813-BZ, 11-11, 131st Street, Queens. Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We were at your review session yesterday, and I'm happy that your board is pleased with the application. I know that you have a, had a question about the garbage.
We didn't really have the question. It was a question raised by the community board, and they asked if you could get it, have the garbage picked up from 132nd rather than 131.
Right, and I'm happy to say we've resolved the problem or the concern that was had with that, and the garbage is on the plan, shown on 131st, where it's been since the facility opened, and we've come to a great agreement with everybody about that. What prompted the concern there, what I'm passing up to you right now is the Queensborough President's recommendation, which I circled at the bottom, to show you that we've come to a solution with everybody since the community board seven application. Community Board seven heard the application, and the issue was raised by Mrs. Stevenson Akori, who represents a property owner across the street on 131st Avenue. And they were concerned because the garbage trucks were backing down the street, because there's roadwork, DEP has a street closed, intersection of 11th and 131st, the garbage trucks were backing down. And when they were backing down, the liquid from the garbage trucks was dripping out when they were loading on to the trucks, and it was causing a mess on the street. The owner of Spot Castle has since met with Mr. Akori's client, as well as with the Borough President, and the solution that's been implemented already has been the purchase of a very expensive garbage machinery that essentially puts all of the garbage into a, the word I'm looking for, I'm forgetting the word, more like a plasma, it would hold it, basically, sealed all the liquid. So, as it comes out of the garbage machinery and into the truck, it stays within a sealed container, which is like a plastic, sort of plasma type of creation.
Is this in operation?
It's in operation right now.
No noise complaints?
No, no, no noise complaints at all. The concern was the garbage, the dripping of the liquid. Mr. Akori's client is incredibly happy. They're satisfied. I can get you a letter from Mr. Akori if you'd like. And the community board was simply echoing Mr. Akori's testimony at the time.
Okay.
And it's open, resolved.
Commissioners, any further comments on this? I think everyone likes the provision of additional parking.
Great.
Are there members of the public who would like to speak on this? Any speakers? Okay. Hearing done, I think we can close the hearing on this. Motion to close.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
And we'll set the decision for September 16.
Thank you. Is it possible, if I may ask, is it possible to get it a little sooner so they could start work?
I can't put it on the 9th, and I think...
August?
The August calendar is fairly full.
Understood, we understand. The legal counsel's busy. I understand. Thank you.
Item number 18, calendar number 32713-BZ, 1504, Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn. Goldman Harris.
Good morning, Commissioners. Howard Goldman for the applicant. Let me go right to the matters that were raised at review session, and then we can backtrack and talk about the project generally. Commissioner Otley Brown raised a number of questions about the parking study that[1647.72] Good morning, Commissioners. Howard Goldman for the applicant. Let me go right to the matters that were raised at review session and then we can backtrack and talk about the project generally. Commissioner Otley-Brown raised a number of questions about the parking study that was done for this project.
Actually, Mr. Goldman, rather than just going to address the questions, why don't you give us an overview of what the application is and what's being sought here?
That's fine. Will do.
Thank you.
So this is an application for a parking reduction under Section 7344 of the zoning It allows the parking requirement for certain uses to be reduced by up to 50%. And the use that, in particular, that's relevant here is ambulatory medical care, medical offices, which have a basic requirement of one space per 400 square feet. And this requests that the parking be reduced to one space per 800 square feet, which is a 50% reduction for that use. The project itself is a large mixed-use project, which has a number of other uses. None of those other uses are being, are we seeking a reduction for. So this is focused on the medical office use only. The project itself is otherwise as of right in all respects. The proposed mixed uses are a 50,000-square-foot department store, 25,000 square feet of use group six, retail, 56,000 square feet of ambulatory medical care, 28,000 square feet of community facility, nonprofit office space, and then a very small 3,400 square feet of use group six offices. The parking requirement as calculated strictly under zoning would be 346 spaces. The proposal.
346.
346.
Right, okay.
The proposal is to, as I mentioned earlier, reduce the parking for the medical office component and thereby provide a total of 272 parking spaces. The 272 spaces would be on two subsurface levels. And it is simply not possible to dig another level. I understand the second level is right at the water table, so any further excavation would be into the water. The proposed parking system is a, an automated system, which we can talk about a little more. But that allows more efficient use of the space for parking.
Where is the entrance? The entrance is on Coney Island Avenue?
The parking or the?
Parking.
The parking entrance will be on Coney Island Avenue.
Okay. And the exit is on the side street?
Avenue L.
Please don't call up. If you're going to testify, I have to come up to the microphone.
Let me ask my architect to come up and help me with some of these questions. But enter on Coney Island Avenue, exit on Avenue L.
And I don't know if your plans show like a reservoir space because I can envision people coming, collecting their stuff to go to the, either the doctor or the department store.
Sure.
It's not an immediate transfer.
Sure.
To the attendant. And likewise, when you finish shopping, to get all your stuff, wait for your car, put your stuff in the car to get ready to leave, out of a different exit, so.
We have, we will be submitting after this hearing, a letter from the parking consultant, which explains how the reservoir system works for the automated parking system. And, you know, according to the parking consultant, there won't be any queuing on the street. So I will submit that.
Okay.
Very shortly after the hearing. As well as, we have a whole book describing how the automated parking system works by the company that manufactures it. We'll submit that as well for the board. So the parking reduction is required in order to accommodate this amount of medical offices. If the request is not granted by the board, it doesn't mean the project won't be built. What it means is that instead of the medical office, we will have the nonprofit office space, which actually has a one-per-800 parking requirement under the zoning. So the net effect will be the same amount of spaces, but a different mix of uses. Basically, the medical offices will be reduced and the nonprofit offices will be increased. So, you know, we think that there's a demand for medical offices in the neighborhood. We think it's a very good use at this location. So we're trying to accommodate that. The parking information, the studies, show that the garage at the reduced rate will be more than big enough to accommodate, to accommodate the peak demand of the project. The peak demand, the highest demand is projected to be 198 spaces on, in the midday on a weekday. Call it 200. You know, the garage obviously will have some excess capacity. Now, this is also important because this is a congested intersection. And a lot of the congestion is because there's a supermarket, a very popular supermarket located across the street. It's called Pomegranate. And particularly as people in the neighborhood get ready for the Sabbath, there's a lot of traffic to this supermarket on Thursday evenings and Friday afternoons in particular. Pomegranate has only 30 parking spaces. We looked at the C of O. That's all it has. And that is really insufficient. Our garage, to the extent we have unused spaces, excess capacity can handle some of that overflow parking from Pomegranate. The net result, we think, will be a benefit to the neighborhood and not a detriment to the neighborhood.
So this is going to be both accessory and transient parking?
No, no. It is an accessory facility, which by definition must serve, must primarily serve the occupants, visitors to the site. But to the extent it's serving those needs on a primary basis and there are extra spaces, we believe they can properly be used by others. Also, people who come to shop at our site can also go across the street and go to the supermarket. They can take care of a couple of things at once. So we think, at the end of the day, this is actually a good thing for the neighborhood, which does suffer from a lack of parking. So the community board opposed the project. They thought it would contribute to traffic congestion. I don't know that we properly explained it to them or that they fully understood what was going on. But they opposed it. And currently, the council member is indicated that he is opposed to the project.
Yes, we received a letter from Councilman Greenfield.
Okay. We have not seen it.
Okay.
But we are continuing to try to meet with the council member to explain this further and hopefully change his mind on this position. And we have been unable to really do that prior to today's hearing. But we intend to keep trying to do that after today's hearing.
Good. Commissioners, did you have any specific questions you would like to ask on this application or any comments?
Regarding the existing parking demand, have you studied that, the actual existing parking demand in the neighborhood?
Let me ask our environmental consultant, Jim Heineman, from Equity Environmental, to come up and answer those questions. He can also answer your questions about how did we derive this peak parking demand? Why is it 198? What methodology?
Okay, that'll be helpful. Mr. Heineman?
I'm sorry. One reason why I'm asking this is because if this is going to be a facility where you pay, I would think a lot of patrons would look to park on the street before they entered the parking garage and pay. So it would be increasing the parking demand in the area.
It does certainly depend upon what the fee structure is going to be. That's a relevant factor.
Good morning, James Heineman, Equity Environmental Engineering. It sounded like Commissioner Montanez was asking about the parking demand for the existing uses in the area, which is, I mean, we've not attempted to quantify that. I can certainly say, you know, I live nearby, I live in West Midwood on the, you know, Community District 14 side of Coney Island Avenue, but I'm very familiar with this area. And certainly, I would think that anybody who tries to rely on street parking rather than pay whatever the fees, would probably do that about once and then realize that street parking is an extremely limited availability in that area. So I think that, you know, there is a demand for the parking that we are providing for, among the uses that we're intending to put into the building. But also note, as I think Mr. Goldman mentioned, that we, you know, Pomegranate has a relatively small number of spaces and, you know, anecdotally, based on passing by, it seems like often they have their delivery vans parked in some of those spaces, which further decreases their availability. Of course, none of this is our project itself. I mean, we are providing 272 spaces, which is significantly more than anybody else does. And so I don't know if that really answers the question that you had about the, studying the existing parking demand, except that we know that there is very limited, you know, curbside parking. That's evident just from spending time in the neighborhood. We've not actually tried to survey the curbside parking because it's our belief that we don't have to rely on the curbside parking because we're providing sufficient onsite parking to address the needs of the building occupants.
Well, as I, I guess my concern was that you would have to pay to use the parking lot. And depending upon how expensive it was, people would generally try to park on the street first and would increase the demand, which is already extreme.
My belief, I'm not quarreling with that. And the fee structure has not been set. That's potentially something that could be discussed. But the on-street parking is also not free in this neighborhood. It's, I understand it's meter parking. And, you know, people have to deal with that also.
Could you get us some data on that? Because I think it would be relevant to the inquiry that Commissioner Montanez has proposed.
Which is the existing parking conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just to clarify. I mean, we can document which streets are munimeer versus which are governed by alternate-side street sweeping. But are you also saying you actually want us to do hourly parking demand and availability? Or just where you have to pay and where you can park for free subject to street sweeping?
We just want to get a better sense of what is the parking atmosphere in the surrounding neighborhood?
Okay.
Which is metered, which is alternate-side? Because I think that influences the demand. Mr. Otley-Brown, did you have a question as well?
Yeah, I had had questions about the peak period and how you settled on the peak period of 12 noon, when you had varying peak periods, as well as varying sources of information. And I looked at it again and it seems to me as if what you did is you just added up cumulatively all of the uses hour by hour and then just settled on the retail peak period because that just is when you have the most of the, the largest demand. And it kind of cancels out the peak periods of the other uses.
Well, I'll let Mr. Heineman answer that. I do know when you have a mixed-use project, like you say, there are different peak periods, which actually is beneficial in terms of parking because the peak demands are spread out as opposed to all being at one particular time. But let me ask Jim to answer.
Yes, that's correct. Each of these uses does have a different peak period of peak activity. The, you know, the medical facilities and commercial offices typically, their peak demand is in the late morning, between, say, 10:00 a.m. and about noon. Retail uses peak a little bit later in the afternoon, sometimes in the evening periods. And then, you know, in this neighborhood, maybe Sunday would be, Sunday may be a busy period for the retail, whereas during those periods, the offices would essentially be creating, you know, zero parking demand. And what we did, which maybe this wasn't clear, if so, I apologize. We actually approached this two different ways. Our initial, trying to get a sense of the parking demand was we relied on the Institute for Transportation Engineers Parking Demand Manual for the various mix of uses in the building. And then we, to, you know, reflect the facts on the ground, we adjusted that based on local U.S. Census data, on journey to work for people who work in the neighborhood, not people who live in the neighborhood and commute out, but people who commute, who work within the census tract, their mode of travel. That was our primary data source. And then to kind of, as a check, to see whether that number looked reasonable, we also looked at the survey data that we conducted for a fairly nearby project at 6010 Bay Parkway, which was also, you know, healthcare facilities. And in that case, unlike the current case, we actually had tenants who had committed to occupy that space. And we were then able to go out and conduct actual staff surveys and actual visitor-patient surveys to find out how people traveled either to work or to their medical appointment. So using that data, using that data and comparing it, we actually found that the, you know, our first method, the ITE adjusted by U.S. Census, gave us a, the numbers are pretty close, they're actually very close. The U.S. Census data were a little bit higher, so a little bit more conservative. But, so it wasn't so much I was melding those two sources, which maybe I was unclear about, but that the seconds, you know, the 6010 Bay Parkway survey data were used as a check to see whether our numbers, based on the industry standard methodology, came out looking, you know, a sniff test, as it were.
So you stuck with the ITE manual statistics because it came close to the other?
Yes. It was close, it was actually a little bit higher, a little more conservative, using the ITE methodology than, you know, the survey of the patients and the, you're right, the patient and staff surveys for the occupants of 6010 actually showed a lower parking demand. So if anything, I think we're erring on the side of being conservative using that methodology.
And the other question was, what were the office and not-for-profit statistics based on? Also the ITE as well?
Yes, the office, the commercial office was based on ITE. The nonprofit institution, we didn't have a good comparable for that, so we just assumed that that would be similar to the office.
Okay.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Yeah, just a quick question. Since you've got this sort of very intense use across the street, Pomegranate, did you do any correlation between your peak time and the peak time, say, of Pomegranate so that you don't get sort of that perfect storm of, you know, a bazillion cars in one place at one time?
Yeah, that's actually something we did subsequent to the environmental assessment statement. We looked at what happens, as Mr. Goldman mentioned, on, you know, people preparing for Sabbath on maybe Thursday evening or Friday afternoon shopping trips, what would happen if the demand for the retail, both the retail components in our project were higher, say 150% of what would otherwise be expected for that hour on a typical weekday. And, you know, again, we note that by the evening or late afternoon, the peak, the demand for the office space is going down. Certainly on a Friday afternoon, you're unlikely to get a medical appointment. So the demand for the, for the office, for medical office uses are decreasing at the time, but the retail use might be ramping up. And we noted that we would still have adequate capacity, such that, as Mr. Goldman mentioned, we think we may be able to provide some relief for the other uses in the neighborhood, specifically the supermarket.
Under any circumstance, you're not really at capacity?
No, I think, you know, if our numbers show 198 and we're providing 272, there's a pretty good margin of error. So I think we're, I'm comfortable that we're not going to be generating more parking demand on our site than we're providing, far from it.
Okay.
The last thing I'd like to say is, we have collected a number of letters of support, which we'll be submitting to the board. We have a number of residents and we have over 25 local businesses that are in support of building this facility and specifically the garage. So one of those letters is from the Pomegranate Supermarket and it's strongly in support. So we will be submitting that, those letters to the board.
Thank you. Are there any speaker, oh, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Do you have any special location for drop-off or pickup via accessory ride or ambulance for the medical facility off-street? Have you considered that?
Yeah, good question.
You don't have to answer us now, you can show us your plans.
Okay.
Because I didn't see that.
Okay. We will respond to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further for Mr. Goldman? Hey, are there speakers on this item? Please come forward. State your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
Good morning, distinguished commissioners. My name is Barry Spitzer and I'm the district manager of Brooklyn Community Board 12. I sent in a letter yesterday.
We received it.
So I would like just to verbally convey the board's position on this application. The applicant is requesting under the special permit to eliminate additional parking spaces that are required when building a community care facility, specifically which would be required is 346 spots. They're asking for reduction of 75 spaces that would be required for this. Our board held a public hearing on this request back in January. The residents and businesses alike near, that live. The residents and businesses alike near, that live and operate next to this location were overwhelmingly against this. All felt that the lack of adequate off-street parking for this facility would have a negative impact on the community. Coney Island Avenue is one of the busiest commercial strips in our district. As it is now, parking is at a premium, and at times it can take up to a half an hour or even more to find a parking spot. To make matters worse, obviously, we discussed this already, is Pomegranate Supermarket, which is one of the largest and busiest supermarkets in the area. There is constant traffic congestion due to shoppers and the delivery trucks. I just went there yesterday just to see for myself. Two o'clock in the afternoon, not a busy time. The entire side of Coney Island was lined with trucks and double-park trucks. And this is during the summer, two o'clock in the afternoon, when there's no shopping going on. By not adding additional parking spaces as required means that many would have to use on-street parking, adding to the parking problem which already exists near and around this facility. On behalf of Community Board 12, I hereby request this application for special permit be denied based on the facts that have stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzer. Are there any further speakers? Please come forward.
I'm Jack Friedman. I live 1129 East 10th Street, directly across from public school. It puts me pretty much in the heart of the area, which is taken up by cars from all over the area. I was listening intently as I could. I really wasn't sure how they're going to bring the cars in into their facility and how deep the facility is being built away from the street, the sidewalk there. If, depending on which way you are, if you're coming from K and you're going down towards L, that's great, you spin right in. But if you're coming from L going towards K, you can't spin through all that traffic to get in. It's going to be an awful lot of around and ring-around rosy in order to finally be able to get back, to go around this way, to go in, to swing in, to come in, to go over. We also have one of the largest yeshivas called Chaim Berlin Yeshiva, which is almost diagonally across from the facility. And on the corner, there's a secondary yeshiva, not anywhere near as big, but it's right there as well. That is directly across from where Pomegranate comes out, and Pomegranate has to have special poles in the middle of the street in order to be able to get his cars out. Now, I don't know what they meant by they only found 30 parking spots in Pomegranate's area. It's considerably more than 30 parking spots that Pomegranate gives its people. And when the people pull in there, they stay there exactly. Now, in terms of being able to say, only these parking spots are for this on the ratio of 1 in 56 or 1 in 80 or something like that, and only this is over here, and therefore if we make a free place for community organizations to be, therefore, we can take away X amount of spots. And if we say that, depending on how, and I haven't seen a single sign yet of any doctor or medical person going into that facility to know how many it is and how they can project, are they going to say that they will only allow so many doctors' offices in there? I really don't know. It's a little bit more important, before you give away what you really have no right to give away, which is the space that belongs to the people in the community, you should be in contact with us. The community was left with a horrible, horrible situation. The people went 30 feet deep. The walls of the block were literally shook, and they put up wood supports. And then, all of a sudden, the money ran out and everything stopped. People's homes were in definite jeopardy of coming down.
Okay, sir. Your time is up. Could you wrap up?
Could I wrap up? Of course, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I don't think that it's sufficient for spaces to be taken away. I think the thinking should be of spaces to be added. I could say much more, but I'll defer to what you said.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your testimony. Are there any other speakers? Please come forward.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jane Carey. I'm the chief of staff for Councilman David Greenfield. The councilman apologizes he couldn't be here this morning. He's chairing a land use committee meeting right now. I'm here to reiterate his opposition to this project. I know the councilman submitted a letter to the board yesterday afternoon that lays out our concerns. It really echoed the concerns of the community board and local residents. The Pomegranate Supermarket, which you've heard much about now, does cause a significant hardship for the residents that live near the supermarket. And we believe that reduction in the parking spaces at the proposed facility will only exasperate those problems. Our office routinely gets calls from our constituents who have their driveways blocked by patrons of supermarkets. And we see ourselves that there are supermarket patrons doubled and triple parked along Coney Island Avenue. So for those reasons, we oppose this project. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, Mr. Goldman? So after a couple of questions that you'd probably like to answer in a written submission to the board?
Yes, we, we're prepared to make a rather comprehensive submission.
Okay. If you submit by August 19th?
Mm-hmm.
We can put you on for a hearing on September 9th.
Sounds good.
Does that work for your schedule?
Yes, that works.
All right, so submission, August 19th, hearing, September 9th.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Chairman, will we be calling the next two items together?
Yes, why don't we call the next two items together since they are related and they're the last two items on our calendar for today?
Item, item number 19, calendar numbers 13314BZ, 13414BZ, and 13514A. That's Father Capolano Boulevard, Endady Avenue, Staten Island. Department of Housing Preservation and Development. And item number 20, calendar numbers 136 through 13914BZ, Kiskwick Street, Olympia Boulevard, Lincoln Avenue, and Mapleton Avenue, Staten Island. Again, the...
I think there's one other address.
19 Sunnymead Village.
19 Sunnymead Village. All right, I think that covers them all.
Great. Thank you. Hi, I'm Amy Peterson. I'm the director of the Housing Recovery Office, responsible for the Build It Back program. The Sandy Recovery Build It Back program is a program to repair, elevate, or rebuild about 15,000 homes in sandy-impacted areas. It's funded through HUD, federal funding, and we are starting construction on some of the homes. HPD has responsibility for about 500 homes that will be rebuilt. These are homes that were severely damaged or completely destroyed in the storm. The Build It Back program is managed by HPD. Our program standards commit to rebuild the size and unit count of the pre-storm home for the owner, meeting FEMA's guidelines for flood-resilient construction and the energy-efficient standards for Energy Star certification, and within a two-year construction timeline as required by HUD. There's an urgent need, it's been 20, 21 months since the storm, to assist homeowners so they can move forward with reconstruction. As a part of providing assistance to homeowners, HPD and Build It Back have developed these applications to make reconstruction of these homes possible. If this zoning relief is expeditiously approved, these homeowners will be able to start construction in September. A number of procedures were modified or waived to simplify this process for Build It Back. We'd like to thank the board and the staff, and particularly Jeff Mulligan, for their assistance so that these homeowners are not further delayed and so construction can proceed. Deborah Morris with HPD will speak in detail about the prototypes available to homeowners and why these applications meet the facts and findings of the requested relief today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. My name is Deborah Morris. I'm the director of Resiliency Planning at HPD. We attended your review session yesterday, and we have addressed your concerns and questions regarding correcting our facts and findings on parking minimums. Our homes will provide two parking spaces, one underneath the house and one in the driveway leading up to it. We've also corrected, and will submit in paper today, the zoning analysis for 16 Mapleton. I can answer any questions you have. I also have our architect here, where we can discuss any of the particular homes. Regarding the GCL waiver for 19 Sunnymead, yesterday we received a letter of support or no objection from the fire department with a series of requirements. HPD commits to meeting those requirements in all of our homes that require GCL waivers. So 19 Sunnymead, for 19 Sunnymead, that means, sorry, the entire building will be fully sprinkled in conformity with Chapter 9 of the Building Code. The entire building will also have an interconnected smoke horn system designed in accordance with Building Code 907210. The height of the building will not exceed 35 feet in accordance with 5021 of the Building Code. And the building is a like-for-like replacement. We're not increasing the intensity of the use or providing multiple dwellings.
Commissioners, do you have any specific issues or questions you have for the applicants?
No.
No questions? I think the applications were very straightforward and clearly presented, so we thank you for that. Are there members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. And then we'd like to hear from the fire department as well.
Hello, my name is Veronica Skabinski, and I own the property at 1101 and 1103 Olympia Boulevard. And the proposed site at 1099 Olympia Boulevard is a 20-foot-wide lot that they plan to spend the next two years building on. And in the interim, when Sandy happened, this house had a basement that made it collapse. I was red-tagged because they were afraid this house was going to collapse on mine. I was denied rights for rapid repair. I couldn't get electric. I couldn't get gas. I finally got back in my house not that long ago, and I'm still rebuilding. And now to spend two years having these people bring giant cement trucks down a house to a 20-foot-wide opening and put it in a place that's just, so now, I don't even know what kind of structure they're going to build there. And I think it's unfair to ask me to go through another two years of this. I haven't been able to get in my house because, specifically because of this building. And that's all I really have to say on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The fire department, would you like to speak into the record on the questions that were raised with regard, in particular with Sunnymead Village?
Hi, I'm Battalion Chief Tom Dolan with the fire department. We understand that they wanted to take our no objection letters for 19 Sunnymead and apply it to all other buildings in the program. We'd just like to raise our concerns or make, point out what was most appealing or acceptable to the fire department in this application. The four-hour rating for fireproofing on all exterior walls and floors, we would expect or hope that in these areas where violations of GCL 35 and 36, that would continue underneath the entire area under the home, not just the carpark area. We also realized that in some of these areas, there was a zoning resolution in October 13 that redefined a lower portion of the building and could raise the height of these buildings because we're going to use the starting point for the flood-resistant construction elevation instead of the grade level. If we do that and we come into some of these areas where we're going to have to put up two-story buildings to replace the building like and kind, we could end up with substantially high second stories that we'll be concerned about because of the limited access, we'll be operating purely with portable ladders and not getting fire trucks anywhere near there. So we'd like to take a look at each one of those individually.
Yes. If these applications are granted, that does not mean that the fire department will not be asked to opine again on further GCL applications. It's the board's routine operation to submit these to the fire department for your comments, and we appreciate them.
Okay, good. And we just maybe will keep that in mind as we develop these things. And the other concern would be for the one that was on the list for 555 Lincoln Avenue. That appeared to be a mixed-use occupancy with a commercial thing on the first floor? No, they're all...
Well, I'll ask HPD to come back to the microphone to answer that question.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Ms. Morris?
Sure. Just to address the construction mitigation standards that the program has in place during ongoing construction, HPD will be, has three levels of monitoring for, on all of our sites. One is we have our own staff in our Building and Land Use Development Unit, who will be monitoring construction on a weekly basis. They have their specific staff dedicated to making sure construction quality is met. That includes any, you know, being in compliance with the law and not damaging adjacent sites. Our staff have vehicles, and we'll be out visiting all of our sites. Our construction is also monitored by our loan CPC, and we monitor for completeness for billing purposes.
Okay, I think that is helpful. And perhaps when we're done here today, if you could speak to the neighbor who raised the concerns so that perhaps we can raise her comfort level about what's going to be happening in the neighborhood.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. And did you want to just comment on the issue raised by the fire department with regard to 555 Lincoln?
Sure. So why don't I, can I bring up a drawing of 555 Lincoln?
Sure. I mean, I think it's just a question of whether it was mixed-use or...
No, it was a single-family home before, and it is being replaced with a single-family home.
Fine, I think that's all we needed for the record.
Okay.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Any comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you to the applicant. Thank you to the fire department. I think we can close this hearing today and set a decision date for next Tuesday, the 29th. Motion to close?
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing for July 27th.